Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Well, good evening. Welcome, everyone. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council Meeting of November 8th, 2023. Welcome. It's so good to see so many people here to celebrate wonderful things happening in our community. Today, we have the pleasure of hosting the 67th Annual Teen Government Day. Joining us are some of the Kern High School District's finest students who have participated in a day of learning about local government. And during, right after roll call, we're going to take a minute for each of our students to be interested. Introduced. There we go. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
We are here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
We're here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. It's my pleasure now to introduce our new mayor, Jackson West of Stockdale High School. He's ASB President, belongs to the National Honor Society, he's a student representative with the Western Association of Student Council, maybe. California Scholarship Federation Member, Drama Club NAMI Member, and he's also Homecoming King. He plans to attend San Diego State and pursue a career as a civil engineer or a politician. So, Jackson, just a hello from you since I introduced you.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody.
And now, Ward One. Oh, actually, you're down there, so we'll, go ahead. Ward Two.
Ward Three.
Ward Three.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Celadon. I attend Bakersfield High School. I am class, senior class president. I am also the Kern High School District Board Member, and I hope to pursue law.
Hello, I'm Zachary Bean. I go to Centennial High School. I am the Senior Executive Board Treasurer and a member of the Four Dimension Program, and I am hoping to go to Oklahoma State University to pursue mechanical engineering.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Hi, everyone. I guess I'm your Vice Mayor now. My name is Jared Tan. I'm here representing Independence High School. I'm a four-year member of the ASB. I'm also a concert master of my school orchestra, and I'm also involved in a wealth of other clubs at my school such as National Honor Society, Key Club, and the United Nations. And as for a career, I hope to pursue a career as a psychiatrist, hopefully at UCLA or USC.
Thank you. And our Ward Five student was not being, was not able to be here. And now, Ward Six.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jocelyn Sala. I attend Garsus Memorial High School. My college goal is to attend New York University. I would like to become a personal injury lawyer or pursue the performing arts. I have a 4.01 Camilla GPA in National Honor Society and Califor, in the California Scholarship Federation. I am ASB President and co-president of the Hispanic-Latino Culture Club. I play varsity tennis, and I am on the Garsus Shepherds and in the Garsus Drama Club. I have a passion for singing and acting. I participate every year in my, in my school's spring musical, which brings me so much joy. Tennis has also been a huge part of my life since I began playing at the age of seven. I have played, I have played all four years during my time at Garsus. I am in Latino Leaders of Kern County, and I did the Get on the Bus Project, and I sing the National Anthem in communal events, and I am very excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. And our next Councilmember for Ward Seven.
All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Lily May. I am a senior at North High School. After high school, I attend, I am planning to attend beauty school to study cosmetology and also be involved with community theater. Some things I have achieved in my high school career has been getting Platinum Star status at my school. I have three consecutive years of 4.0 status at North High. I am currently ASB President, and I was class president all three years leading up to my senior year. I am also President of our North Star Players Club, which is our theater and arts club. I'm involved in ASB, Link Crew, Adventure Club, our Star Spirit Squad. I also am the announcer for our varsity baseball team, and I'm also part of the Blue Zone Club. I am very involved in our Got the Dot program, not only on campus but in our community. And I love to travel, I love to sing, and I'm very happy to be here with you guys.
Well, thank you. Don't you think our future is in very good hands? We normally don't applaud, but we're going to. And now, we'll go to this side.
Good evening, everyone.
City Attorney.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alondra Rodriguez. I go to Ridgeview, and after high school, I do hope to attend UC Berkeley to study economics. And then with the hopes is that I would pursue a career in corporate law. Currently, I am an AP Scholar, currently ranked third in the nation for our virtual enterprise business competition, and I'm also a current member of the Ford Dream Buildership Program. I am the current CEO for our virtual enterprise program, the President of Spanish Honor Society, and a Valley Strong intern. Some of my interests include crocheting, reading, and also trying different types of cuisines from other cultures. And some things that I do to give back to my community is help beautify local gardens.
Thank you. And now, our City Manager.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jared Delgado. I go to East Bakersfield High School, where I uphold a 4.4 GPA, and act as our senior class representative, as well as being the varsity football captain and the varsity track and field captain, where I've been recognized as a hometown scholar athlete of the week, as well as a recipient of the Bakersfield Jockey Club Award. I'm also belonging to a lot of clubs such as NHS, CSF. I'm the President for our We the People Club, as well as the Fishing Club, and I'm very involved in our Ecology Club as well. Just like some of the other youth here, I'm also part of the Ford Dream Builder Program, where I'd love to be involved with our community and really give back to the people in need.
Thank you. And now, Public Works Director.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you to City Council for allowing us this opportunity. My name is Abraham Lopez. I go to Liberty High School. I eventually will hope to go to UC Berkeley to pursue environmental engineering, where I hope to, you know, just help the health of our environment. Currently, I hold a 4.42 GPA, and I'm part of Spanish Honor Society, National Honor Society, National Art Honor Society, and National Honor Society. I'm part of Cheer, Link Crew, We the People, GSA, Friendship Club, Art Club, Green Machines, Unidos por la Musica Club, and Mecha. And I'm also part of the CSF Club, and I'm a Liberty Representative for the KHST Board of Advisors. Some of my hobbies include gardening, watercoloring, and I enjoy going on hiking and nature walks. And I get back to the community through volunteering at homeless shelters, the Dia de los Muertos, and window-to-cock-off annual events, donations through food distribution, and toy and school supply collection, and a few others. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause. Our new city leaders. Parents, family, they are, are a reflection of you, and thank you for your investment in our youth, and we are so excited to have them with us today. At this time, we have the pleasure of having Pastor Darius Walden, who's the pastor of Southwest Christian Center Church of God, to offer the invocation. Thank you, Pastor, for your leadership in our community. And then, following the invocation, Katie Johnson, who is a senior at Highland High School, will lead us in the pledge. She recently was awarded the President's Volunteer Service Award from the White House for 300 hours, probably more than that, of community service during this past school year. A 4.0 GPA, ASB President, Drama Club President, Ford Dream Builders, early college student for the Administration of Justice Program at Bakersfield College. She received a $10,000 Friends of the Fair Scholarship and plans to attend UCLA in the fall with a political science major, and she's going to be the mayor, the Assemblywoman, and the Senator one of these days. So Pastor, please come, and would you all please stand?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Council and distinguished guests. The Word of God says in the Book of Proverbs, "When it goes well with the righteous, the city rejoices; and when the wicked perish, there is jubilation; but the blessing of the upright, the city is exalted. He who is devoid of wisdom despises his neighbor, but a man of understanding holds his peace. Where there is no counsel, the people fall; but in the multitude of counselors, there is safety." So Father, we bless your name tonight for this great representation of this wonderful city that we believe the sound of something better in our decision-making, we believe the sounding better for our economy, for our education, for all the things that would pertain to life and wholeness in our city. And now, God, we ask your blessing in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Katie.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated, Katie, if you would come up here and take the seat here. Pastor, you are welcome to stay or leave, whatever works best for you. Mr. Mayor?
Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos, and for safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the court, in the council chamber, or lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during the other portions of the meeting.
Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city.
Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit.
Well, thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations Item 4A, Proclamation to Janessa Fisher, Foster Youth Specialist for Kern County Superintendent of Schools and Youth Action Board Chair for the Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative, declaring Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Bakersfield during November 2023.
Each year, more than 4.2 million youth across the country experience at least one night of homelessness. Established in 1992, the Kern County Network for Children protects and enriches the lives of children in Kern County, identifies and addresses the most critical issues of children in Kern County, including the prevention of child abuse, neglect, and homelessness. It's my honor to be able to present this proclamation. Whereas Kern County Superintendent of Schools identified more than 6,500 children who lacked a fixed, regular, or adequate nighttime residence per the McKinney-Vento Act, and whereas in addition to losing their homes, many homeless youth will also lose family, friends, and a sense of stability and safety, and increase their likelihood of substance abuse, early parenthood, and vulnerability to being trafficked. And whereas local organizations, including the Kern County Network for Children, are working to promote youth well-being and educate the public on the potential dangers youth experience while homeless, now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month in our city and urge all residents to support organizations that provide services and resources to help homeless youth. It's my honor to be able to present this to Kern County Superintendent of Schools. Thank you so much, and you're welcome from the Dream Center to offer remarks and introductions.
Good evening, City Council Members. I'm Janessa. I'm Chair of the Youth Action Board.
My name is Cynthia Lara Martinez, and I am also a member of the Youth Action Board.
For those who don't know, a Youth Action Board is a Kern County, the Kern County Youth Action Board is a proud standing committee of the Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative, providing feedback on policies, procedures, and programs related to preventing and ending youth homelessness. Youth Action Board members include 18- to 24-year-olds who are either currently or formerly homeless youth. YAB members can provide feedback based on their lived experience of youth homelessness.
The Youth Action Board mission is to bridge the gap between homeless youth and supporting agencies by advocating the needs of homeless youth and creating a safe space for youth with lived experience. November 2023 is National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. According to the Youth by Name list, there's 250 to 300 youth that are experiencing homelessness in Kern County at any given month.
This year, to help bring awareness and connect youth to resources, Youth Action Board will be coordinating a hygiene and shoe drive from November 1st to November 30th to provide youth with essential items and let them know that their community cares.
On November 6th, YAB hosted a panel on a resource fair where community members got to hear from the youth who have lived experience and have faced homelessness before, while also connecting youth who still face homelessness to essential resources in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to? You're part of the team. I am part of the team. Thank you all so much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations Item 4B, a presentation by Shayla Woods Collins, Human Resources Manager, to winners of the 2023 Excellence in Action Awards, the Extra Mile Award and Star Award in recognition of outstanding service to the City of Bakersfield.
Ms. Collins.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Go, members of the City Council, and those visiting us from Teen Government Day. My name is Shayla Collins. I'm the Human Resource Manager for the city. I also serve as co-administrator of the city's employee incentive team. Today, we are pleased to present the city's 2023 Excellence in Action Program. Before introducing the winners, I would like to recognize the efforts and contributions of staff who submitted nominations for these awards, to the supervisors and department heads for supporting those nominations, and to the rest of the employee incentive team for their work in reviewing the nominees. Finally, thank you to each city employee for your continued commitment in serving the public each and every day and exhibiting the sound of something better in Bakersfield. This evening, as each winner is introduced, our City Manager, Mr. Clegg, will present the award to each employee in the interest of time, and so each recipient can hear their name. I would ask the audience to hold, to please hold their applause until all the awards are presented, and we will do a group photo following the ceremony out front. There will also be a PowerPoint presentation on the video monitors, which will highlight the recipients' accomplishments that warranted this special recognition award this evening. So without further ado, our first recipient is Kevin Albertson. He is a deputy fire chief in the Fire Department. Next, we have Nicole Anderberg. She is a police lieutenant in the Police Department. She may not be present today. Next, we have Pilar Avalos. She is a secretary to in the City Manager's office. Next, we have John Bishop, who I believe is also not here today. He is a police sergeant within the Bakersfield Police Department. We have Andrina Cruz. She is a risk management specialist in the Risk Division of the City Manager's Office. Next, we have Chris Usee, who is a fire engineer within the Fire Department. Stephanie Garcia, who is a performance analyst too, within the Bakersfield Police Department. We have Eileen Lewis, who is an administrative and fiscal services specialist within the Next, we have Mike Sar. He is a technology services engineer in the Technology Services Department. He is, wasn't also not able to be here with us today. Stephanie Sanchez, who is an administrative and fiscal specialist in the Planning Division of the Development Services Department. Evan Trask. Evan is a technology services analyst one in the Technology Services Department. Joshua Tristan. Joshua is a canal tender two within the Water Resources Department. And we have Julie Tullis, Accounting Specialist within the Finance Department. Vanessa Vargas, Administrative Analyst in the General Services Division of the Public Works Department. And Michael Williams, Code Enforcement Officer in the Building Division of the Development Services Department. That concludes the individual awards. The next award is the STAR Award, which stands for Shining Team Achievement Recognition, which commends and reinforces the need for all employees to collaborate and work in support of one another for the overall success of the city. We also have the Extra Mile Award, which is selected by the City Manager and executive staff. This year's winner also both won the STAR Award and the Extra Mile Award, and that is presented to our Water Resources Team. There are 18 individuals in this team who are all present here today, so I'm going to read their names, and we would ask that you guys kind of stay up here as a group for us to conclude those. So first, we have John Adventcula. Louis Flores. Omar Flores Jr. William Goldsberry. Jimmy Mullins. Dugan Nolan. Jonathan Perez. Ruben Ramirez. Mark Robles. William Tillman. Michael Vrenderberg. And Edward Rather Jr. Thank you guys all so much for your contribution. You can head to your seats. So again, we would like to commend all the winners and nominees on a job well done. Thank you for your time and joining us in recognizing all of our recipients this evening.
Congratulations to all of you. We have one more presentation.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations Item 4C, Certificate of Recognition to the Brundage Lane Navigation Center in celebration of their anniversary and 300th Permanent Housing Placement.
Anthony Valdez. You're part of the team. Tonight, we celebrate the Brundage Lane Navigation Center and our shelter operator Mercy House. We're honored to have with us Mercy House CEO Larry Haynes, BLNC's Theo Dues, Diana James, Gail, Alex, and Ariana Morales. And over the last five years, the City of Bakersfield has invested in our paramount issue facing California. We've invested in over 600 shelter beds. Our crown jewel in our efforts to triage the homeless crisis is our city-sponsored Brundage Lane Navigation Center, which opened on October 6th, 2020. It's been incredibly successful, thanks in part to the city's partnership with Mercy House, who is our shelter operator and property manage, manager. Last night, there were over 250 individuals sleeping in the shelter, and just last week, the city and Mercy House celebrated the 300th Permanent Housing Placement. So if you do the math, that's 250 individuals sleeping in the shelter and another 300 individuals that were given the keys to a place of their own. This means there are now more than 500 people removed from the streets in just three years. We're so grateful, our community is so grateful for the dedicated efforts of Mercy House, BLNC, to create these opportunities for our most vulnerable residents to thrive, to grow. And on behalf of the City of Bakersfield, we just want to thank you so much for your efforts. Let's celebrate our 300th Permanent Housing Placement. Give it up for BLNC.
So, good evening. My name is Larry Haynes, and I am the CEO of Mercy House, and I just want to tell you how grateful and excited we are to be a part of the Bakersfield community. I love everything about this night, and I love everything about the presentation, and if you listen carefully to what we talked about, especially to you folks who, I have t-shirts older than you. One of the things I want, I hope that you heard from that, isn't that we're simply celebrating managing someone's homelessness, but we're celebrating ending someone's homelessness. And that's the key. So please don't grow up thinking that this is an impossible problem. It is not impossible. This is something that we can solve together. And I think it's really the result of three things. A wise, the wise investment and leadership of council and senior staff, the extraordinary, extraordinarily hard work of the Mercy House team, but also the collaboration that we have with our local COC and other service partners such as the Rescue Mission, Flood Ministries, the Open Door Network, all of us working together to end homelessness in Bakersfield. Thank you all so very much for trusting us and making us a part of your community.
Thank you so much. Just take a bow.
Good. All right, we'll do a couple of them here. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. And show that off.
Oh, yeah.
There we go. And three. There you go. Three, two, one. All right, cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, 300th placement. Give it up. As they leave, let's give them a hand. So we have one more portion of the meeting before we dismiss the students, and it might be very good for them to be able to hear this portion of the meeting. And for all of you who are here tonight, you'll be able to see this broadcast on YouTube in a couple of days. And 20 years from now, if you want to look it up again, you'll be able to see what happened this evening. So feel free to check that out. Mr. Mayor?
There's a period of items listed at the, on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per. 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council.
If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or a matter not on the agenda.
Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you are here on meeting item 9A, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to a committee or request that staff contact you.
So if you're here on hearing item 9A, now isn't the time to speak. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received one speaker card regarding items listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Karina Funes regarding item 7C.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Karina Funes, and I'm the Public Policy Advocate for Blue Zones Project Bakersfield. We are excited to see the city take steps towards complete streets through an ordinance. This ordinance will decrease pedestrian fatalities, aligning with one of the objectives that Blue Zones Project Bakersfield is dedicated to achieving. Complete Streets is an approach to planning, designing, building, operating, and maintaining streets that enable safe access for all people who need to use them, including pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and public transit riders of all ages and abilities. While the city has previously adopted a Complete Streets Resolution, it's imperative that we establish strong measures of accountability to guarantee the effective implementation of best practices, including comprehensive Complete Street strategies. Complete Streets must evolve from a mere concept into a steadfast citywide commitment and standard. By doing so, we are making Bakersfield streets safer for all road users, particularly those who are most physically vulnerable. This will empower people to move naturally throughout our community because the streets are designed with them in mind. Blue Zones Project Bakersfield is a strong supporter of the proposed Complete Streets ordinance, recognizing the pivotal role in fostering community where individuals can naturally and easily make the safe and healthy choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Funes. Madam Clerk, are there any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received five speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Miguel Rodriguez, followed by Delia Dominguez, followed by Margie Bell.
Welcome.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, everyone in between, and our esteemed members of the Bakersfield City Council, I stand before you today as a proud volunteer for Bring Back the Kern, a group dedicated to the preservation of our precious Kern River. We find ourselves in a unique position this year, one that allows us to talk about keeping the water in the river rather than debating on how we get the water back, as we were just last year when the river was dry. God is good, yes? We have been blessed with heavy rains and a historic snowpack this past winter. These natural gifts have rejuvenated our beloved Kern River, breathing life into an ecosystem that was on the brink of collapse. We cannot take these gifts for granted, and we must act with a sense of urgency. Just a few days ago, Kern County Superior Court Judge Greg Pulskap granted a preliminary injunction temporarily blocking efforts to reduce water flow on the Kern River. This ruling recognizes the importance of maintaining water flow sufficient to support the fish downstream of the Weirs, a victory for our environment and our community. This year, we have the opportunity to come to an agreement about how much water should be allocated to the various partyed interests, including agriculture and municipal needs. This is a moment of historic significance, a chance to balance the needs of our community while protecting the gift of a running river, preserving vital ecosystems, enhancing recreational opportunities, and cherishing the breathtaking beauty of the Kern River. The recent articles in the local press and the Los Angeles Times further emphasize the critical importance of this moment. They underscore the fact that we have a chance to make a lasting impact by ensuring that the Kern River flows not just for us, but for generations to come. In conclusion, I urge each one of you to recognize the urgency of the situation, the precious gift of the winter's bounty, and the opportunity to preserve the Kern River. Let us come together as a community and stewards of this remarkable natural resource and work collaboratively to ensure a sustainable future for our river.
Thank you. Would you introduce yourself just for the record, please?
My name is Miguel Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Next speaker, please.
Delia Dominguez, followed by Margie Bell.
Welcome. Would you lower the mic, please? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Delia D. Dominguez. My cultural heritage is Yolomni Yokez, Venturaño Schumash, and Katanama. My great-great-grandfather Joe Chalola, Jose Maria Chalola, would travel the Kern River by tulip boat or walking from the mouth of the Kern Canyon, where the waterfall was located, through Woylou, the original Bakersfield, from where his wife, my great-great-step-grandmother Maria Chalola, was born. At eight years old, she and her entire village had to leave under threat to the Sebastian Military and Indian Reservation. She was a traditional basket weaver. From Woylou, my great-great-grandfather continued to Kern Lake, Buena Vista Lake, to the west end of the valley where the river turned north as it slew through Tulare Lake to his furthest northern point, Chauchilla. Along the way, he would stop and visit with friends, stay a while, a day or two, then move on. This was obviously the original road trip. My great-great-great-grandfather, Tenokee Francisco Cota, and his brother Kawana Vicente were both signers of the Treaty D at the temporary military camp, Camp Percifer Smith, at the then Sebastian Military and Indian Reservation in 1851. Treaty D was one of 18 California Indian treaties that were not ratified, rendering all California Indians homeless. This decision was placed under seal until approximately 1906. If Treaty D had been ratified, as the Yokez of the Kern River had been led to believe, the entire Kern River from the mouth of the canyon, the waterfall, to the west end of the valley to Buena Vista Lake and Kern Lake, to all the foothills at the end of the valley from west to east and north back to the Kern River, would have continued to be home for the four Kern River Yokez tribes: the Yolomni White Wolf People, the Halaomni the Sugarcane People, the Tulomni the Lake People, and the Tuhoomni, the people of the Slough. Today, this day, we are elated for the very positive answer to the injunction request made by the various organizations for water in the Kern. It comes after unexpected heavy rains fell into Sierra Nevada, the valley, the Kern River, after or during a prolonged drought.
Ms. Dominguez, your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please? The two minutes are up, so if you can just close up your comments, please.
Okay. The river became full with water, so the fish came back. Right now, the four tribes are in a period of, like the Dia de los Muertos, where we honor the ancestors. And we believe that the ancestors, just like the Dia de los Muertos, brought the water, which is the rain, and therefore brought the fish back. Remember that water is life, and that river is life. And all of us benefit from a flowing, living river: the people, the fish, the ducks, the birds, the children, the squirrels, the plants, the air, the soil, and others. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dominguez. Next speaker, please.
Margie Bell, followed by Kelly Damian.
Yes, my name is Margie Bell. I'm a retired high school teacher in Kern County and have lived here for over 50 years. I don't know anybody, really. Frankly, I don't know anybody who opposes having water in the river. Nobody that I associate with and have associated with for years here in Kern County. This is really a watershed moment for us. To allow the river to run through the town has many, many benefits for all of us, for the critters, of course, for the birds, for the cat foxes, for the animals who live along the river. There are certain recreational opportunities also along the river that could be developed. I grew up in Boulder, Colorado, where the creek runs right through downtown. And this is a gathering place for many groups, for concert groups, for farmers' markets. There's a band shell. I was part of a marching group that was involved in band when I was in high school, and we performed in the band shell. Anyway, there are many opportunities along the river. And actually, I think the area west of Oak Street on the Turkson Extension is a terrible disgrace. It has not been cared for, and we, as citizens of the city and county, need to be more conscious of the appearance that that gives of Kern County with visitors and others. The trees are dead, the habitat is desiccated, deserted, and we need to work on these issues and show the citizens of Kern County what a wonderful place this can be. And that's up to all of us citizens, as well as to the city council. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Ms. Bell, and thank you for being my teacher.
Next speaker, please.
Well, it's a big night for teachers because I have my students here as well. So I'm Kelly Damian, also a teacher. And if you're here tonight to support Bring Back the Kern and the Kern River, will you please stand up quietly? Don't make a disruption. Thank you. So for too long now, the story of the Kern River in our town has been a story of decline and despair. The river has been only a sandy riverbed, and each year, we've been forced to watch as the riverbed became more and more derelict. Yet, even when the river was a dead space, we still tried our best to care for it. Bring Back the Kern has organized and led more than 10 cleanup events for the river. Our volunteers have contributed hundreds of hours and pulled tens of thousands of pounds of trash from the riverbed. Those cleanups, the art projects people have made, the March for the River, the testimonials we've given in front of the State Water Resources Control Board have all been acts of hope and love because we had to do that in order to counteract the complete despair and hopelessness that we fell in face of that dry river. Even taking the city to court was an act of love, not combat, because you fight for the ones that you love. I'm here tonight on behalf of Bring Back the Kern and the people of Bakersfield to ask the city to join us in rewriting the story of the Kern River. Let's stop battling and start cooperating. Please settle the lawsuit with Bring Back the Kern so that we can start focusing on the future of the Kern River because getting water flowing in the river is only the first step. We need to reimagine the role that the river can play in our town, and there are so many questions we need to ask. How can we restore vital habitats along the river? How can we ensure access to rest and recreation for the people of our town? How can we use the river to create jobs and grow our city's economy? These are big questions, and they will require input and cooperation. The time for fighting is over, so let's work together and to create a joyful future for the river in Bakersfield.
Thank you, Ms. Damian. And now for our final speaker. Madam Clerk, would you please call the next speaker?
Final speaker this evening is Jose Rangel.
Welcome, Mr. Rangel.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Jose Rangel. Tonight, I would like to commemorate the lives of Yolonda Godinez, Darlie Santiago, and Gabina Santiago de Arias. You know, they fell victim to the Auburn Triangle, responsible for nearly 100 deadly crashes in the past seven years. And a few weeks before that, also Rose Miriam Sanchez was run over in New Cayama on the Grimway Farms. So tonight, I would just like to say the names to start this off. And they're field workers, they're farm workers. And in the $7 billion industry, $7 billion industry, actually, 2022, I find these deaths and the circumstances attributing abhorrent, but not surprising. The agricultural industry is an industry the city seems to prioritize above all else. As apparent from the acquisition of water attorney Colin Pierce, the City of Bakersfield conspired with Colin Pierce to block an injunction from being granted that would allow the river to run its course, southwest Bakersfield for the time being. The City of Bakersfield was told to count some numbers, so I hope that when you guys do, you guys figure out how to also fill up the Buena Vista Lake and the Tulare Lake because the Buena Vista Lake and the Kern Lake run up. That was here before all of us. You know, I got a couple of stones, but I'm faced with flocks. So I really need you guys' help, especially the youth. It's really inspiring to see you guys up here. I know you guys are going to be here, but we just need to come together because this is the greatest city in the country, you know, the greatest country in the world. I think we need to do better. And about, like I said, I got a couple of stones with flocks. One of the flocks was Peter Cohen and Cardinal Equities, and I think we should annex, you know, Jim Burke Ford and Eminem Domain's property to expand Beach Park Southward because, like they were saying, and Bakersfield has an appearance problem. And when visitors come and residents come, you know, it's nothing to... So I think the expansion of Beach Park Southward, you know, bigger, Art Park-esque type of lake that people from the west side of town could enjoy, people from the east side, people from, well, they even, they want to...
Mr. Rangel, your time is up. Would you close your comments, please?
Of course. Yeah. Eminem Domain, Peter Cohen. Excuse you guys, I know it's crazy. But Rome wasn't built in a day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rangel.
And Madam Clerk, is that the last public comment?
Yes, Mayor Go.
Would all of the parents and relatives of our outstanding youth please stand? And youth, let's give them a hand. Stand up. Don't be shy. And now with our young people, would you all please stand with your parents and your family? And we're going to give them a big hand. All of you, please stand. We are so blessed, we're so fortunate to have these outstanding leaders leading our community. Parents, relatives, friends, thank you for your investment. Young people, thank you so much for being with us today. And at this point, unless you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you are welcome to exit with your parents, and maybe you'll go out and celebrate, or maybe you'll do homework so you can continue your 4.8 GPAs. Thank you all. Go ahead, and we'll take a brief recess while you all exit. Okay, we need to continue our meeting, so council members, thank you all. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar, items 7A through 7W. A staff memorandum was provided, transmitting correspondence regarding item 7C.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, does any council member wish to recuse themselves from any item? I have two requests, one from Councilmember Smith to pull item 7C from the consent calendar, and I have a request from Councilmember Weir to pull both 7C and 7P. So with that, I will make a motion to accept and approve the consent calendar except for items 7C and 7P.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Gray. Motion is approved with Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you. And now 7C.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the Multimodal Transportation and Traffic Safety Ad Hoc Committee for moving this Complete Streets Policy and Ordinance forward. And as we've been discussing for quite some time now, our pedestrian traffic deaths are much greater than they can and should be, and this is part of the whole system's approach that we are using in order to try and reduce that. So with that, I'd just move for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez, do you have a comment?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo the points that Councilmember Smith has made. You know, this year, we took pause with our Community Services Committee, and instead we instituted an ad hoc committee on multimodal transportation. I believe it's been very productive. This is a product of that committee. Look forward to the committee continuing throughout 2024. And so I'm very thankful for the committee and all the hard work, and look forward to the adoption of this ordinance.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Weir, do you wish to make a comment? No. So you have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Sorry, Mayor, go ahead, request to speak as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Corr.
I want to join my colleagues in thanking both our Chair, Councilmember Adias, and my colleague on the committee, Councilmember Smith. And I wanted to give an example and just share why our road safety, pedestrian safety, multimodal safety is so urgent. I know when we talk about some of the initiatives that we're taking or some of the policies we're implementing, for some folks, it might just feel like a stop sign, it might just feel like a new crosswalk, it might just sound like a new stoplight or a barrier between a sidewalk and a road, and all of the different ways in which we keep everyone safe on our streets. But I have myself personally been coming across so many examples while I'm just commuting. And within the last two months, I have just been passing by, by chance, multiple accidents in which either a pedestrian or a cyclist was hit by a motor vehicle, and this happened to me just this morning on my way, actually downtown, as I was on my way to the Legislative and Litigation Subcommittee for our City Council. I was on my way downtown, and on Panama Lane, there's this elderly woman who was sitting on the sidewalk with an ambulance next to her. And she was on her routine walk as she goes to the temple every single morning. An elderly woman who checked both ways before she crossed. She wasn't crossing in an intersection, she was actually just passing through an inlet of a plaza, a shopping plaza, a rather busy one, but she checked both ways. She let three cars pass. Again, this is her everyday routine. It's her everyday path that she takes. She knows this route, she knows the patterns of traffic, and she checked before crossing, and still a vehicle struck her, struck her to the ground, she broke her hand, she has head trauma, she was bleeding, and there was only an ambulance there, and there was nobody to translate for her, so I pulled over to translate for her. And this is the second or third person just in the last two months that I've helped translate for. I've called our local authorities, they've been very responsive, and I'm very thankful for them, both BPD and our fire department and our local ambulance services who provide the care in these instances. But I hate to think if I was not passing by, this woman who shared that the driver of this car was actually in a hurry to leave and was impatiently listening to if the woman's family had already been called because she was in a rush to go, and she was going to hit this pedestrian and leave. And that's the point that I emphasize to our officers, who were very attentively listening. And I escalate the urgency of this every single time I come across it, because I myself am seeing them. And there is no reason that she should have been hit. She knows this route, like I said, she watches for the cars, she crosses with her own safety in her own hands. And my fear is that she'll never feel confident enough to take this path again. The independence, the health and happiness she feels in having a routine that feels her own is also at risk. But people also lose their lives to accidents like this that seem small and simple, and it might just seem like someone didn't check both ways to see if a pedestrian was coming. And that's why I wanted to emphasize why making sure streets are safer for everyone is that much more important, because it's literally people's lives on the line. And this woman had already waited 20 to 30 minutes. The ambulance services weren't sure if BPD was coming, and that also worries me, that there was not clarity as to whether or not what, in my eyes, is a crime when you hit someone who is more vulnerable on the roads than you. But like I said, once I contacted, I made the 911 call to BPD, they were there within seconds, and I'm so appreciative of that. But I think of the moments and the people that don't have that resource and don't have that support or don't have someone there to watch over some kind of situation like this. So again, I join to emphasize the urgency, and I'm thankful for the progress that we're making. Because the good news is, an intersection where residents and myself have been advocating in Ward 7 for stoplights or stop signs was installed, and I want to thank Greg Strakoulis and your team for installing that at Brookshire and Ash. Received so many positive comments about that, about the improvements and the stop signs that have been utilized there, and folks were so pleasantly surprised, it took them aback to have to stop there. But the response has been so incredibly positive, and so I am very grateful to you and your team for being so quick and responsive in implementing those road safety changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Corr. You have a motion?
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir voting no, and Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you. And now item 7P. Councilmember Weir?
Thank you. You know, we've had some discussions the last couple of meetings about vision and about what we want Bakersfield to look like and how we're going to get it there. And it's all great things, and it's going to help this community immensely. But along with just vision, it takes thought, it takes a commitment, and with that, it needs to have a money trail. Somebody's got to pay for it. And so while the project here tonight is a project, I'm not sure it's a priority project. I don't think it's a priority project for the entire city, but it is a project. And whether it's done today or if it's done maybe a couple of years from now, when it can be a priority, makes more sense to me. So I am not supporting this item P.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I am in favor of this project. I think it goes for a lot of things we've talked about tonight. Number one, it expands the pedestrian and bicycle access to a very difficult area that is hard to get to right now, the Buck Owens Entertainment Area, where, thank to Buck Owens Enterprises and the Bynum family, that area has been revitalized and has a lot of traffic now. But it's not safe traffic for pedestrians or bicyclists, and this would greatly help that. It also addresses what we've heard a lot from the community tonight about enjoying the river and using the river as something that is positive in the community, and this would cross over the river and give more people access to that. So with that, I'll make the motion to approve item 7P. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is one that has my full support. It is not in my ward, but it will benefit the constituents of my ward and will benefit the whole city. This is a project that is one that adds to our wonderful amenities that so many people in our community enjoy every single day. And, you know, we talk a lot about vision, we also talk a lot about economic development. And the reality is, is that so many people talk about the Kern River Parkway as an amenity that they enjoy. It's a quality of life amenity that, when they come here for a job, that keeps them here because of the recreational opportunities that it lends itself. And so I think it's with that same similar spirit, similar vision, that we ought to pursue this particular project. And yes, budget constraints will always be an issue, period. But it's up to us to find those dollars through, you know, grants or, you know, looking at priorities in other areas, but finding those dollars in order to make this project happen. But let's get this into design.
Thank you. And Councilmember Freeman, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Could just someone quickly review how much, because I can't get back to it here, how much will this project cost in the short term and what's, again, the total amount of cost for this project? Just so they can't...
Mr. Strakoulis?
Mayor Go, City Councilmember Freeman. This project, the total project costs are undetermined at this point, but this step in the process is a million-dollar contract with a consulting firm to help shape the way this pedestrian, multi-use pathway bridge looks and where it gets situated, including the architecture. It will contain three options for City Council to look at and decide how this project moves forward for future funding.
Okay, so this is just the million design?
Okay.
A portion of the design. And then I'd also, and was this in, is this in our budget for spending in the time period we anticipate spending it?
Yes, not only in the budget as part of the grant match fund opportunities that we have, but also consistent with the City Council goals that City Manager...
But it is in our, we approved a budget, at least for this year. Is it in that budget?
It is. It is in this fiscal year's budget, yes.
I'm the guy who doesn't hear well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir voting no, and Councilmember Gray absent.
Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself and make your statement succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, she'll give copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Hearings, item 9A. Public hearing to consider adoption of resolutions concerning two appeals by Channel Law Group, LLP, on behalf of their client, Progress for Bakersfield Veterans LLC, regarding the Department of Veterans Affairs Community-Based Outpatient Clinic located at 5512 Newton Drive. Number one, appeal of Planning Commission certification of an environmental impact report, and number two, an appeal of Planning Commission's approval of the site plan review number 21-0399. A staff memorandum has been provided transmitting correspondence for this item, but because the materials were so voluminous, there was insufficient time to produce enough copies for the council and the public. The documents are currently available for review right here at the clerk's station tonight, and will be made available at the clerk's office following the meeting.
Thank you. City Attorney, has a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let everyone know that tonight, in anticipation of litigation, we have a court reporter with us, sitting in the media section. And so comments on this item tonight by both the public and the council and staff, I would ask that you identify yourself, please, for the record, since that transcript will need to be transcribed perhaps eventually, hopefully not, and speak slowly for the record, and do not interrupt others. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, item 9A is open. Although we will receive staff's presentation and hear public comments, staff is recommending that the hearing be kept open and continued at the request of the applicant to the November 29th council meeting. Therefore, it is not necessary for speakers to come forward tonight. In fact, we encourage you to hold your comments until November 29th with that in mind. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Oh, but before we get to there, staff, please.
Thank you, Mayor Go, and council. Our planning director, Paul Johnson, has some comments on this topic.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers Paul Johnson, Planning Director. As the clerk noted, this is consideration of an appeal that is to Planning Commission's certification of an environmental impact report and approval of a site plan review for Veterans Affairs Community-Based Outpatient Clinic that I'll refer to as a C-BOK. It is located near Olive Drive, Newton Drive, just west of Highway 99. It's on roughly 10 acres. It is a single-story building, just under 40,000 square feet. To put that in perspective, the local neighborhood markets, our Walmart Neighborhood Markets are roughly 40,000 square feet, not the Super Walmarts, but the Walmart Neighborhood Markets, roughly 40,000 square feet. Again, this is an outpatient clinic, so Monday through Friday, no overnight stays, and we'll have primary and specialty care. Just a brief overview of the site plan review process. The application is reviewed for completeness. It is then sent to a Site Plan Review Committee, which consists of seven city departments. They review that, identify conditions. That then comes to myself, the planning director, for a California Environmental Quality Act review, or SEQA review. In this case, it was determined that an EIR was necessary. That EIR was certified by the Planning Commission on September 7th, which allowed the Development Services Director the following day, September 8th, to approve the site plan review. The certification of the EIR was appealed, and that comes directly to City Council, which is why we are here. The Development Services Director's approval of the site plan was appealed to Planning Commission. That was considered on October 5th. That was subsequently appealed, and again, that's why you're considering two appeals Any person that is not satisfied with the decision of the Development Services Director or the Planning Commission can, within 10 days, again, appeal to City Council and must provide the precise basis and issues on appeal. In this case, the appellant is Progress for Bakersfield Veterans, or PBD, as sometimes they're referred to as, represented by Channel Law Group. Subsequent to distribution of this agenda, this week, we did receive additional comment letters. Two were in neutral positions from PG&E, Kern County Superintendent of Schools. We received 10 different correspondents from those in the middle. It is relevant to note that one of the professors that co-authored the CSUB letter also co-authored the Sierra Club letter in opposition. We did receive a letter from Mr. Smallwood and from the Solari Miserv Law Firm. That law firm represents Bakersfield, Kit, Fox, and environment. But again, it's also relevant to note that that law firm, Solari Miserv, used to represent PBV, Progress for Bakersfield Veterans, back in 2021, and they were part of the appeal process then and part of the SEQA... process then and part of the SEQA lawsuit. Additionally, Solari Maserv had engaged with Mr. Smallwood to submit comments on the appeal back then, so these comments are rather repetitive from Mr. Smallwood. And then Channel Law Group submitted five additional pieces of correspondence, and in total, there were 11,000 pages that we needed to go through. Those are sitting next to the clerk. Some of you may be able to see those. And with that, Lieutenant Tucker, who represents the applicant, has requested, as noted, a continuance for three weeks. The downside of SEQA, when we do get these, what's called a document dump, is that appellants and others can conspire and wait until the 11th hour to submit additional comments, which in this case deprives the city and the applicant of the ability to fully read the letters and supporting materials and formulate a response. So these types of document dumps are not only disruptive and counterproductive, it's clearly an abuse of the SEQA process. I say that because I would, I would be confident to say if this was going to be proposed, this site as an EV charging station or a coffee shop drive-through or even an urgent care for one of the local hospitals, I doubt we would be where we're at right now. So with that, and to allow time to fully respond to these comments, we are requesting or recommending that you accept public testimony, leave the hearing open, and continue for three weeks to the regular scheduled hearing of November 29th, 2023. I conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Clerk, do you wish to add any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. No further comments.
Thank you very much. And so as we have said, we encourage you to hold your comments until November 29th. However, is there anyone who would like, at this, I opened it already. At this time, item 9A is open, and I will repeat, although we received staff's presentation already and we'll hear the public comments, staff is recommending that the hearing be kept open and continued and at the request of the applicant to the November 29th meeting. Again, we're encouraging you to hold your comments, but is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition at this time? If so, please come forward. Identify yourself.
I'll be very brief. My name is Jamie Hall. I'm a land use and environmental attorney with Channel Law Group. I'm here representing the appellant. We will reserve our comments till November 29th. I just wanted to very quickly state that we object to the characterizations by Mr. Johnson as to this being an abuse of the SEQA process or this being a document dump or his allegations regarding, you know, affiliations or other commentary that was provided. So just for the record, we absolutely object to those statements. I'll reserve the remainder of comments until November 29th.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Is there anyone who else who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in support? Welcome.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. My name is Jason Parsons. I am a land use and entitlement attorney with the firm, Rutan and Tucker, and we represent the applicant. I will, I will keep this brief, but yes, we are requesting that the city continue this item. There's a lot of information here to deal with. We've been working on it. It's been a bit of a Sisyphean task. Quite frankly, we just need a little more time. We think, though, that the time you'll give us will be well-spent and we'll be able to button this up. So I would just like to say, though, and make it clear for the record and be beneficial to the public, that, you know, this delay is, or rather, excuse me, by continuing this, let me be very clear, by continuing this, the City Council will not be delaying this project in any meaningful sense. I'm not sure if the council is aware, but, and the public may not be, but the appellant has also been engaging at the federal level and has caused the Veterans Administration to reopen the environmental process on the federal side. That process is similar, although not identical, to the state statute, what you know as SEQA. The federal one's called NEPA. And they're going to use the EIR that was prepared here so that the process will be shorter than it maybe typically would be. But we anticipate that that will be wrapped up in spring of 2024, and without that approval, we could not begin construction. So I just want to make it very clear to the public and the City Council that by continuing this item tonight, it only buys us time to deal with this voluminous submission and nothing more. So we would request that you continue the item. I'm here for any questions, but I think the facts speak for themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone who would like to rebut in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to rebut in support? Seeing none, the public hearing will remain open and be continued to the November 29th council meeting. Councilmember Smith?
I'll make said motion to keep the public hearing open and continue to the November 29th meeting.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, a few nights ago, one of our residential motels on Union Avenue caught fire. These residential motels were once motels that provided one-night stays or short-term stays for motorists who passed through town. They now, many of them, serve as single-room occupancy units for very low-income and vulnerable people. The Ramcom Beer Hotel is just one of those with 37 rooms, and because of the fire in several units, the hotel, the motel, lost electricity to every unit. A few days after the fire, I visited the facility at a request from a constituent in the motel, and I learned that there were still 27 or so individuals who were still living there without electricity, including a few families, including children. Thanks to Flood Ministries and many other agencies, including our own code enforcement, who did some pretty good work, we were able to rehouse many of the individuals temporarily into motels, also into the Brothers Lane Navigation Center, Open Door Network Facility, many other places to help support these people who are experiencing a crisis. But the issue really did shed light on a number of problems that I think we, as a council, ought to address. And so tonight, I'd like to make a few referrals in an effort to respond to some of those issues that came up just last week. Number one is there really isn't a comprehensive, multi-agency crisis intervention team that is set up to respond to these type of issues when they occur. We know that there are dozens of these residential motels throughout the city. In fact, just on Union Avenue, there's about 20 residential motels, various sizes. And we know that there are a number of deferred maintenance issues with these facilities. So I think it's important that we plan ahead and prepare ourselves that when there is a crisis, whether it be in a motel or an apartment complex, that we have a crisis intervention team that consists of code enforcement, but also economic community development and also county agencies such as Aging and Adult Services, Child Protective Services, Behavioral Health, so that we can better respond to these crises in real time, like immediately. Number two, I'd like us to explore a partnership with the county to develop a crisis intervention fund. One of the issues that we encountered at the Ramcom Beer was that there were no appropriate placements for some of our constituents. There were families who frankly could not enter the family shelter, and so we had to place them and find resources to place them into motels for the night, actually for a week. But we need a fund available that is immediately accessible so that we can address those emergency needs of special circumstances. So I think a crisis intervention fund will be more appropriate. The other issue that occurred, is very concerning, is that the motel owner and operator left the scene after the fire and was nowhere to be found and left their tenants to fend for themselves. In fact, it broke my heart when I saw and had a conversation with several tenants who were working among themselves to try to find an electrician to help them get their power back on and working with, they took the initiative to work with city code to see how they could try to get the power back on so that they can remain in that facility. Wasn't the owner. I'm talking about the residents there at the motel. We need a stronger local ordinance that holds motel owners accountable to the same degree at which our, any other landlord is responsible for their tenants when these types of issues, such as a fire, occur. So I'd like to refer that to our Planning and Development Committee, that they explore that local ordinance. I'd also like to refer to Planning and Development this idea of a motel registry so that we can get ahead of this problem and not wait for the next fire or the next motel shutdown because of substandard electrical or plumbing or mechanical issues, that we are able to actually respond ahead of time through proactive and systematic inspections of all of the motels within the city of Bakersfield. So I'd like us to adopt and develop a motel registry that then will allow us to pursue better oversight of these motels. And then finally, you know, we cannot deny that many of these facilities have significant deferred maintenance issues, and several have closed over the years. I think Phil, maybe an average of two a year, if I had to guess. And so while we still have opportunities, I'd like us to develop a strategy to address those deferred maintenance issues, either through a conversion into permanent supportive housing for these motels, partnerships with the current motel owners to upgrade their properties through special grant programs, perhaps similar to what Los Angeles has adopted a lease-to-own program with many of the residential properties, these motel properties. Whatever, whatever we, or however we design it, we need a strategy to get on top of these properties that are falling into disrepair and very quickly. It's a difficult situation because currently, many of these facilities are not adequate. But on the, on the flip side, they absolutely serve a need for a very particular population of individuals who are very hard to house into other, other settings, other placements. And these, many of these individuals would be on our streets. They would be homeless were not for these residential motels. So I think a stronger response from the city and some action from this dais is not only timely, but it is dire. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to send a recommendation or a request to staff to create a resolution for the city of Bakersfield to support House Bill 6089 in Congress called the Clean Energy Act, the Energy Choice Act, excuse me. This is a bill cosponsored by our local Congressman Valadeo, and I'm not sure who the cosponsor is, if anybody knows, but, and the bill, as it's, as it's written, would prohibit states or local governments from prohibiting an energy services connection, reconnection, modification, installation, or expands and based on the type of energy source being delivered. It's, this is because in August of 2022, the California Air Resources Board passed down a requirement that any vehicles sold in California, starting in 2035, must be zero emission or that is electric. And the reason I'm asking for this is currently, if you read the papers, the, every electric car, every manufacturer losing over 30,000 per unit in our just yesterday. They're going to bankrupt the big three. That's why they're now curtailing factories, everything, because the loss is so massive, because the technology for batteries simply isn't there yet. It isn't that it won't be someday, but it isn't there yet. And they're, and we're subsidizing with taxpayers, seven and a half to 12,000 per unit, depending on if it's a union factory, and they're still costing 10,000 to 20,000 to 30,000 more for a comparable car. And what will happen is, this is great for wealthy people. I see who drives them all. This is for very upper, upper-income people. The cars cost way too much and the battery technology is still so primitive that working people can't, aren't buying them and can't afford these cars today with the interest rates, it's even worse. But before then, they're simply not buying the cars because they can't afford them. This would make, 90% of the people in Bakersfield will have to drive to Nevada or Arizona to buy a car, is what will happen. And the wealthy will do fine, but all the people in Bakers, which is not a rich community, all the regular working people can't afford these and have to drive out of state. So when we don't have technology, also there, this will not have any impact whatsoever. It isn't even measurable in one thousandths of one percent if fully implemented in global CO2 emissions and reducing the temperature. So there's no scientific basis, there's no effect whatsoever to benefit global warming, but there's a terrible burden to working-class people doing this. So that's why I'm asking for a resolution to support Congressman Valadeo's Energy Choice Act. So, thank you. I guess go, consent calendar, next meeting or a future meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple referrals. Number one, to the Multimodal Transportation and Traffic Safety Committee. We, Councilmember Freeman mentioned last time when he was in Germany and the much narrower streets and all the plus-plus-pluses that that comes from. And we had looked at the subdivision standards some time ago in committee and made recommendations for narrower streets, but staff never brought that back. And when I looked at the subdivision standards today, they do not look like they've been changed per what we had talked about. So I would like for staff to bring the, the standards back that we talked about and so we can confirm that it looks like what we talked about. The changes that we have made are awesome. Again, Brim Hall Road, I was on again yesterday, and, and, you know, it just is a world of difference and you can really, feels much safer for everybody, I believe. And also to the ad hoc committee, I would, we've had discussions with staff regarding, again, we're looking for a systems approach, and part of the system is how we communicate traffic collisions. And so we, I'd like to look at the police press releases and how we communicate to the community, how that happens. And so if, I know we've got something set up with staff, but if that can go to committee and we can move that along, that'd be great, too. So those two to the committee. And then also, Cow Water has been doing a lot of work downtown for the last few months, and I think that's a very good thing. And usually, we beat Cow Water up, so I would like for them to come and tell us how much money they're spending downtown and infrastructure. money they're spending downtown and infrastructure to help our downtown. Fresno's getting a lot of money from the state, and it's all going towards infrastructure, and they're doing some infrastructure for us. So I think a thank you might be nice. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
We're blessed to live in a country where we value freedom and where we have freedom. This Saturday, we celebrate Veterans Day, so we just want to thank all of those who have served and continue to serve our great country. With that, we stand adjourned at 6:48.